Get it started. Okay, good evening, everyone. We are on the record. Today is Monday, the 12th day of July 2021. This is a special meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. I had a scheduled 6:00 PM start. The clock on my computer is showing 6:04 PM. In effort to adhere to social distancing protocols and best practices imposed by the city and state authorities, the City of Jersey City has canceled all public meetings and closed non-essential services as of March 16, 2020 until further notice. As a result, this special meeting of the municipal council will be held virtually as a video conference with public access. We had a scheduled 6:00 PM start. The clock on my computer is showing 6:04. May we have a roll call for the commencement of this special meeting? Councilperson Ridley?
Yeah.
Councilperson Prince Ari?
Here.
Councilperson Bajiano?
Yeah.
Councilperson Saleh is not here. Councilperson Solomon? Here. Councilperson Robinson is not here. Okay, Councilperson Lavaro?
Here.
Councilperson Rivera?
Here.
And Council President Waterman?
Here.
Okay, we have seven members in attendance at 6:04 PM. Can we kindly rise for a moment of silence, please? Thank you very much. Kindly remain standing as we salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just for the record, I want to make sure I said that we have seven council members in attendance at 6:04 PM. Right, on behalf of Council President Waterman, in accordance with New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the posting on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall, the annual notice, which is the scheduled meetings and caucuses of the municipal council for the calendar year 2021 and filed in the office of the city clerk on Wednesday, November 12, 2020. In addition, at its time of its preparation, the notice of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Tuesday, July 6, 2021, at 3:30 PM to the municipal council, mayor, business administrator, corporation council, and the local newspapers, and posted on the city's website, so I can certify as to our total compliance with the Sunshine Law. The sole purpose of this meeting, council members, is to discuss City Ordinance 21-045 and Ordinance Amending Chapter 304 Taxation to authorize a transfer tax and user tax on the sale, transfer of cannabis or cannabis items by cannabis establishment that is located within the City of Jersey City as authorized by New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Enforcement Assistance and Marketplace Modernization Act. Council President, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Well, all I'm gonna do is just turn it over to Councilman Lavaros to lead us in this meeting. Go ahead, Rolando.
Thank you, Council President. I thank you, members of the City Council, for joining in this meeting and the special meeting to discuss recommendations for the allocation of the transfer tax and user tax on cannabis, as the city clerk said. You should have all received and was distributed a document that was entitled "City Council Members' Recommendations for Allocation of Transfer Tax and User Tax on Cannabis." It basically, literally, just took word for word what everybody suggested or recommended with regard to the allocation of the tax. And at the time of the printing, I think Councilman Rivera, your statements were not included, but I wanted to make sure that that was known, so that everybody knows that you had also submitted some comments as well. And that read, "For recreational, to use the funds for recreational programs for the youth and senior citizens, subsidies programs, and job training for the police department and fire department." I'd rather than read through the whole thing, I was going to suggest, Council President, that just have each of the members of the City Council take a minute or two to just kind of share their thoughts. It's already kind of encapsulated in the feedback, but if you wanted to share directly and put it on the record as well, or expand on it, or expound on it, rather, and then we can kind of go from there where to discuss allocating it.
Okay, so I seen the email you sent out with all of our requests, so we want to just take it from the top, I guess, Denise, and then we just go down from ward to ward to read exactly what their concerns are, okay?
Sure.
Okay, Denise, and then Rich, and then, you know, on down the wards.
All right, so my stance hasn't really changed since the caucus meeting where we discussed it. I think that, you know, as the city that tries to be inclusive and as on top of these things as possible, I think that if we are moving forward with setting up recreational marijuana facilities, that we will be remiss if we do not include some type of social equity component to assist those who have been impacted in the past by marijuana or who have been incarcerated due to marijuana charges. So that's what I would like to see a part of that. I think it's hard for all of us at this point to be able to tell how much money would be generated and how soon any funds would be generated. But I do believe that a portion of that definitely needs to go to that cause. That doesn't mean that we can't give money to schools. That's not what I'm saying. But what I'm saying is, we need to decide how we're going to divide that money up so that we could cover those things. And that's about it. And I also, I know at the caucus meeting, Councilwoman Rivera, you know, made a comment about making sure we know where the funds are going or not handing over a blank check to schools. And I think that that's important also, that if we can earmark the money for a certain cause or find a way to make sure that that money is flowing into the classroom, then that's what I believe we need to do. You know, we don't want to give money and then not see our kids benefit from it, and once we give it over, we really have no control over it. That's about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Rich?
I think Mira is next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna skip beat.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mira. I'm sorry.
So also, I agree with Councilwoman Ridley that, for me, I sort of see this as school funding is sort of like a long-term equity piece, right? We want to make sure that our kids are in good learning environments. I know that the SDA has not been helpful when it comes to our school facilities. So I think that if we are giving a portion of this tax to the schools, that's, I don't know if we can earmark it legally, we can, but you can have the best school system, but if the facilities are not good, the kids are always going to have a hard time learning. So that, to me, has always been really important. I think that for people who have had, you know, been directly impacted, adults, teens, and families of having family members incarcerated for sale of marijuana and consumption, like making sure that they're set up for success is paramount to me. The City of Oakland, California, did a really great job with some of their social equity pieces. I think that's a model that we can certainly look at as well. And I think too, that to Council President's point about having an oversight committee, because this is going to be a lot of money, so the same way that we have something for the Open Space Trust Fund, the same way that we have something for the Arts Fund, we definitely need some sort of committee in place to just sort of watch where the money's going and make sure that how it's being intended to spend is how it's going to be spent.
Okay. Thank you. Rich? You're mute, Rich. You're mute.
Okay, as I said today at the council meeting, most of you don't remember the 60s, the early 60s and the problems that were caused by marijuana. Look at Colorado and the driving accidents they're having, and the numerous problems they're having since they passed the marijuana laws. I'm worried about juveniles. I'm worried about people driving. And a lot of times, the marijuana, I remember in the 60s, makes people wacky. And as far as the schools, I say part of this money goes to the schools, but I think we're going to have a lot of problems by passing this, I mean, having this law passed. I have nothing against marijuana. I could care less, but we're gonna, I'm telling you right now, you're gonna watch. Just look at Denver, Colorado, and see the problems they're having. All right.
There's no one here from D, so I guess it's going down to E.
Sure, thank you, Council President. You know, I think, one, we need to put a portion of this money towards the public schools for two reasons. The first is, you know, we're scheduled to lose another $100 million next year. And while we're certainly unlikely to get, you know, even a quarter of that through this tax, or certainly less than that, you know, we have to do everything in our ability to address that and still acknowledge the city gets abatement revenue above and beyond what we would if those buildings share their revenues fairly with the public schools. And I think it's important to state that public schools are, you know, a core equity piece of our city. They're not the only one. There's a lot of really, really important stuff for us to work on, but that is a core part of public schools, and having them be well-funded makes a huge difference in kids' lives. The second is, I'm open to all the ideas that have been established for my colleagues. The one specific one that I think I'd throw out is having a portion of the funds be used to specifically promote entrepreneurs in the marijuana industry who have been specifically harmed by the war on drugs, so that the money directly goes into providing capital and equity so that people can open micro businesses or other forms of marijuana businesses if those people were specifically harmed through the war on drugs. So I think there's some interesting kind of potential models we can use from that. But I, you know, I think a lot of really good ideas have been thrown out and proposed, and so interested in kind of putting them all together.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Danny?
Okay, yeah, so like I shared at the last time, and Councilwoman Ridley, you know, touched upon it. You know, that was, that's like one of my biggest concerns. I mean, you know, a lot of people can say what they want, but, you know, we don't have any type of control, you know, over the budget of the school district. And my concern is that, you know, us giving them an open door without any accountability is a little concerning. Yes, I agree that, you know, the school should definitely be getting, you know, a big chunk of these funds, because like Councilman Solomon stated, you know, the future is grim, you know, they're gonna be losing, you know, a lot of money even next year, probably $100 million, and that's extremely concerning. But, you know, I think that there should be a, maybe a fund, for us to create a fund for this, for these, for these monies to go to, so that, you know, and create some sort of a committee so that they can watch over this and allocate, you know, as needed. Is what I'm, you know, trying to picture, you know, because, you know, there are teachers in our public schools, in the Jersey City Public School System, and there are many teachers in the Jersey City Public School System that, in the summer, spend thousands and thousands of dollars to prepare themselves, of their own money, to prepare themselves for a September start, because they don't have books, they don't have, you know, they don't provide, a lot of them don't provide a lot, you know, the school system doesn't provide what the supplies they need, and that concerns me. You know, it concerns me a lot because their budget is pretty big, and you know, we don't know what's going on there. So my worry is that this money goes into salaries, to be truthful, and it goes into a purgatory system, you know, at least that if we have a fund, a funding in place or a gatekeeper or a committee to watch these these funds and allocate as needed, I mean, that's where I stand with that. And, but again, you know, I'm not against, you know, allocations going to the public school system at all, because I understand the monster that's going to be faced next year, like, you know, it's gonna be big again, you know, and, you know, we need to come up with a way so that we can secure that leakage. So that's where I stand.
Thank you. Well, I'll just say mine, because Councilman Lavaros is hosting this. I can see, based on what we have said, we all agree that schools should get something, social justice should receive something, and there should be some type of oversight, all right? So really, for me, the question is, how do we get this done? You know, what percentage do we think should go where? Okay, what type of board structure can we do legally? Because you want this legally. And I'm quite sure when the funding come in, there's probably some type of count that will be set aside, like, you know, the Open Space Fund or the Arts Fund, so it'd be some type of fund like that. So I think the question is too, and we're gonna need the law department on this too, how can we structure this in such a way that we do have oversight on this funding? We all agree the schools, we do agree the schools should get something. None of us are saying that it should not. We all agree that social justice should get something, because this happened on the backs of people unjustly. And we do believe that it should be some type of oversight. So I'm open on how to get it done. That's where I'm at, okay? Go ahead, Councilman Lavaros.
Okay. So I agree with the Council President that we were, that those are the three areas, I think, that it sounds like there's uniformity and agreement, perhaps, and it's just a question of what the details are inside of all of that, right? So the one thing I'll say on the school side is, obviously, I, along with Councilman Solomon, introduced this with the idea of 100% of the allocation going towards Jersey Public Schools. And the rationale for that is that, as has already been said, that the situation is dire for the Jersey Public Schools. We've seen this year a nearly $1,000 increase on the school levy side, and then anticipating similar, if not more, reductions next year for that, next year's budget cycle. And so the question that we've had, we've had these meetings with the school board members, is where can we find sustainable funding sources? And I know that there are those who would say, well, there has to be a combination of reductions as well as increasing in revenues. And that's true, but we don't have real estimates on this, and I don't think it's realistic to kind of project that this is going to be some $20 million fund or anything like that. I don't think it's going to come in close to that at this point. And so how much of these monies, not knowing what those dollars look like, would be dedicated to any of the purposes that we've talked about? One of the things I do want to raise, and I completely agree with the social equity piece and entrepreneurship and other things of that nature, but the one thing I'd just ask is, where would those funds be directed? I don't know that we have currently a reentry program or what the status of that is with Jersey City Employment Training and how that's being administered, or if we're working with the New Jersey Reentry Corporation. I don't know where that stands currently, and so I'm definitely interested in hearing that. And then as far as kind of the oversight and compliance, you know, certainly if there's a a need to ensure that the funds are spent appropriately and whatever we can do legally to ensure that that happens, we can certainly put conditions in there for that purpose as well. That being said, I did want to throw out an idea in terms of how to move things forward here with regard to how to allocate, and again, not really knowing what the dollar amount will be. Will it be 20 million? I guess not, but I would guess. You know, I've heard projections of 5 to 10 million. I think that's probably fairly optimistic, frankly, but I think it's probably closer to like 3 to 5 million, and maybe it increases over time. But we won't know until we actually see this whole thing come to fruition, and maybe Councilman Bajano's, right, maybe we see, we find problems that we didn't even anticipate seeing as a result of the legalization. So my suggestion or proposal to the council is that, as far as the funds go, that knowing that we know we need to find some form of sustainable funding for Jersey Public Schools, that we dedicate potentially the first 2.5 million of any funds collected to the Jersey City Public Schools, and then figure out some other number percentages around other pieces, whether it be social equity and others, and whatever those numbers would be, those percentages, can talk through that, but just knowing that we need to find some sort of dedicated sustainable funding source for the Jersey Public Schools, that you know, if we're looking at 5 million, that would be 2.5. That would be half of that fund, potentially. If you're looking at 10 million, it's 25%. So it would depend on kind of your, what you think your view, your view would be on that, but for my purposes, I think 2.5 million, like we said, when we look at an $80 million reduction, as we had, and it led to a $1,000 tax increase for residents in 2000, in this current budget cycle for the schools, or the one upcoming budget cycle. And you can anticipate a similar number in the future. 2.5 million is really kind of a drop in the bucket when you look at those numbers around that. So that's my proposal and suggestion that I throw out there to everyone. I just want to, for the record, Council President, Councilman Robinson did submit some comments as well, and just read that into the record, which says, he said, "I would like to see taxes used for social equity, recreation, and trade schools." So.
Okay.
So. I'm sorry, Council President.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Is there, I guess, and, you know, I honestly haven't done the research myself, but is there, I guess, some figures that we can look at from other places to see, I guess, what their starting numbers are, like first year, how much they generated? Because honestly, at the same time, like, I don't mean this how it sounds or to imply that, you know, anybody is doing anything underhanded, but right now, like, this is all fluff, right? Because we don't even know how long it's going to take for these places to open and then get rolling, so it's not like it's money that, you know, we're saying we can give to the schools this year. Like, we don't even really have a definite date. Um, I don't know.
Right.
So I think we need to definitely do some research on some numbers and figure out what we think it could possibly generate.
Yeah. So I have a question. So are we saying, so based on, Councilman Lavaro, so you said that, I was trying to write my notes here, you said that you could probably project between, I would say, you said $3 million, you know, that sounds more realistic. But if we do the 2.4, that's like, if we do 2.5 million to the school, that's like 85% correct going to the school, so it kind of like leaves us with not much to, not much wiggle room there with respect to that. I mean, I mean, I don't know, I'm not a math major, so, you know, but if you could just help me out with that. I'm just trying to gauge, you know, what you were saying.
That's a fair point. So if it was 5 million, it would be 50%. If it was 3 million, that would be close to 85%. I'm not having run the numbers. I think if that's the concern there is for equity and the distribution, perhaps could do something like, if it's 5 million or more, and total receipts that 2.5 million is dedicated, and then kind of figure out a percentage formula thereafter for the remainder. But then if it's less than 5 million, then can come, just set the percentages at a set number, right? Whatever that number would be. And I'm not proposing particular percentages for whichever social equity, recreation, et cetera, job training, but can certainly figure that out.
Yeah, I like the idea of setting percentages rather than numbers, only because we don't know, you know, how much is going to be generated. So if we can kind of give, I guess, not necessarily give value to one over the other, but kind of prioritize what we want to do with the money and base the percentages off of that. I would think that would probably be the best way to go, and similar to what Councilman Lavaros was saying, with the 2.5, if we needed to adjust later, we need to adjust later. Like, if we need to adjust the percentages, then we could always adjust those.
So, so, so pretty much we're saying that it's probably best to try to do it by percentages, the distribution? And just pride and put categories really on what we feel like the funds should go to, if I'm understanding correctly?
Yeah, because also, I mean, none of us know, so if we say 2.5 and commit to 2.5, and we don't have 2.5.
Right.
You know, in my mind, it should be a booming industry, but we don't know, and we don't know how soon it's going to take to kick off.
Right.
I mean, I think the percentages are good, because we know that the highest percentage is going to go to the public school system, or at least that's what we want to do. So I think if we, if we, if we take the highest percentage that we know is going to the public school system, we just have to like play around with the remainder of that, of those numbers.
But you know what? I really, I really feel like if we're going to do percentage, we should just probably try to do it even as possible. Because then, I think in the long run, we might have a problem, because if if this all stems from social justice, really, I think really, those, that group should really receive a quite the majority, but I'm not looking at it that way. I'm just trying to make it fair across the board. Because if it had not been for, you know, the cannabis or, you know, the marijuana law, a lot of people's lives would have not been destroyed. You can't ignore that, to me. I understand, you know, when it comes to the children with education, I'm for that, you know? But I just think because this came from the backs of people who lives are destroyed, they are still destroyed today. I mean, I think that they should, if we're gonna go that way, I think if we're gonna say the majority, I think the majority should go to that, because their lives ain't getting picked up at, right now, and I know they're not. I mean, they still have records. You know, things have not been in sponge. It's still hard for them to get a job. They cannot get a job. It's a whole lot there. So, like I said, I don't have a problem giving to the schools, but I just want to make sure the people who brought the attention to this, so to say, there is some type of justice for them. They're still on the outcasts. I mean, they are. So if you're going to do percentage, and we want to do it that, I would go percentage across the board even. That's the way I would do it, to be fair. But if we want to put one higher over the other, I think it should be them, because it's because of their situations that this conversation is at the table, is because of their situation that, you know, the state of New Jersey vote to legalize marijuana, because there was so much injustice with this. So that's my take.
And I think what also might be helpful, as we're considering percentages, is that, you know, to one of the points that was raised, we, since we don't know how much this is going to generate in the first, I would have said, three years, right, because it's going to take businesses time to get up and get running. That first year for a lot of businesses is also really crucial, so we don't know how many are going to succeed and then fail. Percentages will be a way, so we're not hamstrung into certain amounts, but we also want to make sure that whatever the percentages are, is that they're ultimately going to be effective in the goal, right? So I think that if we're looking at some of these other equity pieces, it would be in our best interest to do a little bit more research as well, to see what some of these programs have cost in other places. Right? We know that we want to put X amount of money into job training or additional expungement services or assistance with legal fees and the things that people need to get their life back on track after coming out of prison. Like, that's, we're going to need to know that too. So, you know, I think percentages are fair. And again, you know, like, we, since we don't, since the amount is unknowable at this point, putting a dollar amount on it is gonna, you know, it's gonna be problematic. I mean, look at what happened with the payroll tax, and we thought that it would generate up to X amount of money, and one year it brought in this, and the next year it brought in that, and people were stuck on the number. And, you know, that caused, you know, and that was, that was, that was a hard, hard thing to do. And, you know, that caused, you know, and that that was, that was, that was a hard, hard thing to do. But also, um, Councilman, um, what have your conversations been with the Board of Ed or any of their members? Because it may also be helpful, too, in the next iteration, um, to to bring this to the Legislative Committee for the joint meetings that we've been having, Councilman Solomon and I co-show that. Um, that that might also be helpful because they, you know, you know, and working with the students and working with what they the kids think that their families might need, like, that also might give us another perspective and some different insight.
True.
Was that directed to to me, that's a question?
Yeah.
And I haven't had lengthy conversations, although the initial conversations with them are that, uh, obviously, they they welcome the sustainable additional revenues. Um, I don't think there's, they're they're they're, I I think they're, their conversation is gonna be more, whatever we, the the more we can get, the better, that's, uh.
Can I, can I ask you a question? I'm I'm I'm, I just want, and I'm sorry, uh, Councilman LaBarra, but maybe, let me ask this question, maybe e- either to the BA or or the Law Department. Can can we collect this money by by ordinance as a tax? And then, like, discuss funds later on? I mean, I'm not sure, you know, that's, can that be done?
Uh, yeah, I I'll defer to Amy on this as well, but, um, my understanding of it, uh, Councilman, is that the, uh, the funds would be collected as a tax, and if we don't specify any dollar amounts or percentages in the ordinance, it'd be collected as a general tax and distributed based upon the recommendations of the council. Uh, similar to how we have the, uh, trust funds for, uh, uh, open space affordability, uh, arts tax, you know, whether it be a subcommittee or the council as whole, um, how that money is distributed, but, um, that's how that would work. The ordinance, uh, uh, from a basic level would be that, you know, the ability to collect the tax, uh, as a revenue and then distribute it, you know, as the council wants. The question, I guess, here would be whether the council wanted to entertain putting, uh, the ordinance set forward like we did with the, uh, medical, uh, portion of it, which is dedicated purposely for one or 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 more specifically other, uh, other purposes. But I'll have Amy actually clarify from a legal perspective.
So then if you, I'm sorry, so then if you do something like that, then you don't have to put percentages on an ordinance, right? Or do you still have to do, if we go down that route?
So you don't, no, you don't have to decide the percentages right now. So you could either do it how the ordinance is currently written, that was presented to you today, that just has a tax, but doesn't allocate where it's going. Or if you wanna allocate that it's going to certain, um, funds, but don't put the percentage, you could do that as well. Because as you guys have pointed out, we have no idea what this money's gonna be. So we could clarify that down the road.
So, um, that that's slightly in contradiction to what we just discussed this morning, which is that, um, all of this, this cannabis legislation, um, either we opt in now, and what we, if we opt in before the August twenty-first deadline, then that's what we, that's what we have to live with, essentially, right?
So you could, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, if we don't, we could opt out, but then we could fix, we could, um, we could work on it until then and then come up with it, uh, a more perfected kind of solution, whether it be this or whether it be zoning or any other decisions or enforcement, et cetera, um, that we could do that later. Uh, but that either way, whatever we adopt, if we decide after the August twenty-first date, um, to adopt other legislation, then that would be the legislation kind of moving, that would be the rules moving forward, the rules of the road.
What you would have to do is opt into the tax by the August deadline, but how to spend the tax, you can do later. So the August deadline is really to let all the cannabis businesses know what regulations they're going to be facing, whether it be zoning or whether it be a tax. How we spend the tax doesn't change the fact that they have still pay it. So as long as you have that portion, that they are going to be taxed in by the August deadline, you're good.
Could we, could we establish a fund that would segregate the dollars so that once we do determine it, then those dollars would be held in abeyance until that that time? Uh, because my fear is that, once we pass a tax, the the doll, and, uh, they just go into the general fund, right? And, um, and then, and then there's no accounting for the dollars at that point, they're just kind of part of our our general budget, and we're not able to, uh, that that is, then then you have, then we will have to pass something in order to ensure that it gets, uh, segregated and separated out from, um, from from general use.
Right, so you could do that, you could create a fund to put the money in now.
Mm-huh.
Sure, it would be a dedicated trust fund. Um, you'd have to work with the state, of course, to establish it, but, um, once it's established, any that come in from that, um, particular revenue source would be trust funded. And, uh, what happens with those, uh, dedicated funds is they're also, uh, they don't lapse. So in other words, if we collect a few dollars this year and we don't spend it all, um, which obviously with a small dollar amount, um, we wouldn't probably intend to spend it all, but, um, the dollars would basically stay in a lockbox, uh, not to be dedicated till anything um, is established that for that purpose. So, um, we're happy to entertain that as well if if, uh, we work with the state in establishing a dedicated trust fund.
I I I'm guessing the state would want us to, uh, we we couldn't just kind of just have a vaguely worded trust fund that just sets money aside, but they would want something, some clarity as to like what direction we're going there. If we were to say, tell them we're establishing an education and social equity trust fund, um, and just drop those dollars in there and to be held in abeyance till we kind of work through these percentages and numbers and 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 I don't know, maybe we can even just kind of see where the the market is going and see what kind of numbers, uh, we start to generate. Um, and that would give us a better sense of direction at that point as well, um, knowing that, but knowing that we were holding those monies in abeyance until we have more more information to work off of. Um, is is that legally permissible, do you think, uh, Amy, um, to set up a a fund like that? An education, job, training, and social equity fund? I'm just, I'm making that up a little bit, but just kind of reflecting what has been discussed.
I can look into that, I'm not on top of my head, but I can do some researching, it's back to you on that.
Great.
Okay.
This is Councilman Solomon. I I think, you know, well, just throw out a a potential proposal, which would be for us to move forward with the tax. Um, say in the tax that, you know, our our initial allocation would be fifty percent towards education, fifty percent towards social equity broadly defined, we don't have to go into specifics, and then to get that on the books before the August twenty-first deadline. Um, and then for us to work as a council on the creation of committees that will kind of determine the distribution of funds, uh, similar to the Open Space Trust Fund, uh, the the Arts Trust Fund and things like that. Um, obviously, we'd wanna have both council representation as well as community representation, and then that would then allow us to determine how the the funding would, uh, be be distributed, you know, after this deadline that's coming up here on the twenty-first.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, I think that's a good idea.
And I think it's fine, too, and and certainly things can be amended after that, as Amy suggested.
Reserve establishing the public our broad goals, but gonna create representative committees to really determine distribution moving forward, and then meeting our deadline of of August twenty-first.
Yeah. I think this, I think I think that's a good way to approach it. I mean, it it'd be stated, I mean, fifty fifty and, you know, creating boards and things like that. I think that's a good way to do it. I mean, what do you guys think? I think it's a good idea.
I think that sounds fair and keeps the conversation in play, but but also addresses, again, like I said, like the broader goals. Um, and then that way, everything's in the ordinance, and we can still make the deadlines that we need, um, so we're not opting out. Um, yeah, fine.
What do you think, Denise?
I think that's fair.
Okay.
Gives us some to kind of, um, you know, hash some things out, figure some things out.
How about you, Rich?
Okay with me.
How about you, Danny?
I think that's, I think it is fair. I mean, and, you know, like everybody's saying, at at least it puts us in a position of of a of a better dialogue, you know, knowing where we're where we're going and where we're standing, and, you know, it's 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 good. I think it's good.
So, Amy, um, um, you heard what Councilman Solomon said, the way it should be written?
I did, yep, I can make those changes.
Okay. I think that's the best way to handle it.
Um, Amy, I I have a quick question on that. So those changes that Councilperson Solomon is looking to, um, make on this ordinance, the the ordinance as it is, would that be a significant change? Where we would have to reintroduce this ordinance for advertisement? It's a significant change, substantial change?
I'll look into that and see. We're not changing the amount of the money or method of collection or anything like that, so it might be okay, but I'll, I can let you know tomorrow morning on that.
I appreciate that, Frank, thank you very much.
I I I think, um, the the ordinance that's currently on the agenda, which is the omnibus ordinance, also has the taxation piece in it. Could you put it there, right?
It has the tax in it, it just doesn't allocate where the money's going, so it would just be that change.
Yeah, if you amend it that, then it's already first reading and it's moving forward.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Great. Okay, so we have a settlement.
Mm-huh.
Great.
That was good. So Amy, you'll you'll give us an update on and send it out the way, um, Councilman Solomon said it, so we can make sure we're all on the same page, right?
Yeah, I'll make those changes tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Thanks so much, Amy.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Uh, with that being said, are we good to, uh?
If there's nothing else, motion to adjourn.
Whoa, okay, got a motion to adjourn at six forty-five by Councilperson Rivera. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Prince Ari. On the motion to adjourn at six forty-five PM, all council members present by acclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are out of here at six forty-five PM. Thank you so much, Council President, members of the council, and members of the staff. Thank you for making this happen, and again, teamwork makes the dream work. Have a great night, stay safe, everybody.
Thanks, bud.
Good night.
Night.
Night.